I am a fellow small business owner in our city. I've been having a small business here for on the order of 25 years. And we have a lot of issues.
Check that.
In order for our city to be successful, we must address all kinds of issues in our city government. Emeryville has a point of pride of being an efficient government. We intend to keep that tradition going, not just in reputation, but in actual fact. And we are ready to hear from you what we can do to increase our efficiency, but also to help you grow your business and have your business succeed because we love small business. It makes our town worthy of residents living here. And we want you to exist and thrive in our community. My fellow planning commissioner, oh, roll call. Sorry. So can we have a roll call?
Here.
Here.
Well, just briefly, I want to thank everyone for being here and taking time out of your day for this really important event to give us a chance to listen to you, your needs and concerns. Just briefly, I want to just mention with a sad heart the events that happened on Saturday when we lost the Maas project or the intersection again. I've been in touch with Mr. Holliday and he does plan to rebuild if you might have seen him on the news today. So our thoughts go out to that because he was going to provide some more space for small businesses. So I really hope that the community can support him in getting back on that. But I'm just thankful that we're all here and we're all ears today. We're here for you basically. We're not going to do a lot of talking and hopefully a lot of listening. And Vice Chair Bouders has kind of brought this on first, and I'll let him make a statement.
Thank you, Mayor Donahue and Planning Commissioner Chair Keller. And welcome to everybody who came today. I'm really heartened to see how many people were able to show up this afternoon for the Lunch Hour Network event. I hope this is not the last networking event we have. And as was mentioned before, the purpose of this meeting today is to do several things. One is to make sure that you all get to know each other and we get to know you better. Two is to provide you with some resources and information that's available to you regionally that hopefully can be of greater use to you in the future. And then three is to listen to you so that the decision makers who are up here can go back and have conversations about ways to bring lasting change for small business in the form of capital investments, staff time and networking opportunities. And look forward to you not being very shy today and speaking your mind. And I think am I asking Mr. Cardoza? Mr. Cardoza passes, so I'll pass this back to the mayor.
Okay, I would like to have an approval of the final agenda. Is there a motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Public comment for items not on the agenda. Okay, seeing none. Any ex parte communications from either board? Okay, this begins our joint study session and we have a presentation by Mr. Smalley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, Chad Smalley, the Economic Development and Housing Manager at the City of Emeryville. And I want to first start off by thanking everybody for coming. This is a great turnout. We're really excited to have you all here. We're really excited to hear what you have to say. And we'll start off with a couple of housekeeping items. In case you haven't found them already, the restrooms are through the door you came in, through the lobby, and just continue past the tables around the left. Want to thank some of our folks that have provided food and the centerpieces, and I think Emmy can outline that for us.
Absolutely. We wanted to make sure that we invited small businesses to help out with the event and we wanted to spread it across several small businesses and across town for that matter. So we have Mustard Mayo that provided the sandwiches and the drinks. Thank you. We have D Spot, which is a small coffee brewery here in town, who provided the coffee. Arizmendi provided the cookies. And Bell Flower provided the flowers here at the table. I should tell you that, is that I can go with that? Okay. So for those of you who were thinking ahead and brought your business cards, we do have a small raffle that we'll be doing for the flowers and for the gift basket from Arizmendi out front. And I don't have the business cards with me right now, so maybe we'll do that after or immediately after. And then also I encourage you to eat the chronology popcorn from the middle of the table. And if there's any left when it's done, please bring it with you. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you to all those businesses who helped contribute. So yes, to start this off, small business joint study session, this is all about listening. And the genesis of this whole meeting and this listening session was Vice Mayor John Bouders, over a year ago, I believe, when he was a planning commissioner, suggested that we get together to listen to the small business community, to hear what kinds of programs, services, policies and other actions the city can take to help these businesses that are here become stronger and be successful in the City of Emeryville. So begin, I'm sorry. To begin with, we are just going to give you a brief presentation. Most of this meeting is going to be devoted to hearing from you all. But to begin with, to help frame the discussion, we'll do a little bit of an economic profile, talking about doing business in Emeryville. We'll do an overview of the kinds of small business programs that are given to the city in Emeryville and the city. We will talk, we'll hear from some of the East Bay Economic Development Alliance about state regions for programs that are already available. And we also have a focus on business that's available. So begin with the economic profile. Based on our business license database, there are about 1,000 businesses in Emeryville that have license. Of those, the number of employees that are, that the businesses in the city have. 13% have more than 500 employees. And that is a threshold pick because it's a typical threshold for federal definition of a small business. But to drill down further, zero to nine employees is about 43. Looking at this, you can see that more than half of the businesses in Emeryville are registered. For those businesses with less than 56 employees, they in total employ about 4,000 people. And what that means is that because there are 20,000 employees approximately in Emeryville, that somewhere between 20 and 25% of the people employed in Emeryville are employees of small businesses. And small businesses are a significant contributor to the overall economic activity of the city. Roughly a quarter of the businesses, or I'm sorry, a quarter of grocery receipts activity that's claimed on business license forms comes from those businesses that are less than 56 employees. So small businesses are an important part of Emeryville's economy, both in terms of employment and in general in terms of economic activity. We'll give an overview of programs in general that cities often employ to support small business. I've divided them into three categories. And on these slides, items marked with one asterisk are programs that we, the City of Emeryville, does now already. And items with two asterisks are activities that we do that are perhaps informal or not packaged as an assistance program, but are something we do as a matter of course. So we maintain a database of spaces that are available and help provide site referral services. So when businesses are looking to locate in Emeryville, they contact me or my staff and we help guide them to locations that will work for them. There are consulting services, which we'll hear more about as part of the East Bay Economic Development Alliance's presentation as well, that we help provide networking to those entities that provide general business consulting, including workforce development consulting. We provide energy efficiency consulting. The E3 program provides free energy audits for businesses where our partner will arrive at your business, evaluate its operations and find if there are ways to, you know, increase your energy efficiency with an aim towards reducing your carbon footprint as well as improving costs. Market and demographic data on request, we provide that if anyone has interest in knowing, you know, for example, what the market looks like for certain products within a mile radius of your location, we can provide that. Business visitation programs, some cities do these more formally. We do ours informally. I contact businesses when they file for business licenses and generally try to keep up with what's going on by visiting folks. And some, and training workshops is another venue that cities can and do provide. And lastly, an ombudsman, this has many names, concierge, liaison, ambassador, point of contact for folks at the city to help guide through city processes, permits and the like. We do this one informally as well. You can always contact me or my staff and we will provide these services. But that is a frequent, many of the cities in the Bay Area provide this service. Under the heading of marketing, buy local campaigns and local certification, differentiating businesses from larger businesses. Phone apps and other marketing tools, social media tools, blogs and newsletters to help get the word out about business activities that are happening in the city. And some cities provide funds for merchant associations or districts. Under financial assistance, many cities have revolving loan programs to provide working capital. There's a wide range of these kinds of programs, as small as $5,000 up to $100,000 or more. Sales tax reimbursement, not frequently used, but some cities do provide that in order to reimburse a portion of sales tax up to a certain amount to, in accordance with the amount of improvements that the business has put into the property. Facade grants, this is something that the City of Emeryville did, used to run and has drafted a program to bring this back, but it's not yet active. And impact fee deferral and financing, this is something the city does for certain types of projects as well. And the facade grant program that's in draft has been structured such that it can help provide relief from impact fees for businesses locating in Emeryville. And then the business license fee rebate, this is a recent program the city just started and is beginning to roll out now where we will rebate fees for qualified businesses on their business licenses. And with that, I'm going to throw it over to the East Bay Economic Development Alliance to talk about regional scale programs and what they do and the kinds of support they can also provide to small businesses.
This is Darian, our executive director, and this is David Lay, an analyst, and I'm also an analyst. And today, we're just going to talk about, a little bit about us and then the programs that are out there from the region and the county that will benefit small businesses.
Okay, thank you. Thank you Chad for inviting us and thank you all of you who have come out today. We're hoping that you learn a lot about programs and incentives and exemptions for small business. Let me introduce a little bit about who we are. So we're your regional resource. We're a membership organization. We're about 27 years old. And the City of Emeryville is one of the members of East Bay EDA, which means that we're an extended part of Chad's staff. So we work for him and we provide him with services that he may need to help you grow your businesses. We started as an advisory committee just for Alameda County on economic concerns about 27 years ago, but now we're a nonprofit organization and we serve Alameda and Contra Costa Counties. We're led by very high level cross-sector leadership and includes mayors, city council persons, the county administrators of both Alameda and Contra Costa County, high-level business people who help shape our organization and provide the services that are needed to help businesses grow. We have 129 members and that includes 26 cities. And all the cities in Alameda County are members, 11 cities in Contra Costa and Benicia. So today, David and Luis and I are going to talk a little bit about the six areas of help for you. So one is hiring and employment support. You all need to hire people and sometimes it's not your family members, but you have to look outside. We're talking about business advising services, how to get cash and different forms of cash, tax credits, how to get certified to maximize your chance for your business to grow, and some utility incentives. So I'm going to start off with some hiring and employment support. So how many of you have ever used the Alameda County Workforce Development Board or the Alameda County Social Services Agency to find somebody to work for you? Anybody? Great. When you hired that person, did you get any incentives in the hiring? Did you get any rebates on wages?
No.
Okay, the employee did not last long. Anybody else? Okay, so one of the things we want to let you know that there is a program through the county called AC Hire. And if you hire someone through their program, you could be eligible to receive up to 50% of their wages for a six-month period. And it's up to the $20 an hour wage that you might pay. So up to $20 an hour, you would get that reimbursement of $20 an hour back to you. So if you hire someone at 40, that's the cap for the 50. So that's eligible to you. We have handouts over there with contact people that can talk to you and walk you through that program. On-the-job training, the county also offers some money for the cost of training people, people who are currently your employees, you might have to train on new equipment, or people that you want to hire that need to have some skills to work at your company. So they can reimburse you up to 50% of those training monies. So that information is also on the handout in the corner there. They also can help you with customized training. So I heard some of you say, well, it's really hard for me to find somebody, you know, I have to train people on my machines or what I'm doing. Actually, there were three companies in Alameda County that got together. They had a workforce that had a lot of limited English speakers and they wanted to promote some of them to be supervisors. So they actually used this on-the-job customized training money and they were able to hire a teacher to teach English that would be needed at the work site for these three companies. And that was all paid for. So there are different ways. So if you're interested in any of those, you can contact David, Luis or me, or you contact the people that are on that handout. There's also a small business healthcare tax credit. And this is administered by the feds, IRS. So if you're interested in this one, let us know. We'll get you to the right office and contact people. So up to 50% of your employees' health insurance and premiums for employers, these are for smaller companies with employers with fewer than 25 people, full-time people. But I know many of you are in that sweet spot. So if you're interested in that, let me know, or Luis or David. And then the last one is the work opportunity tax credit. And this is really important. This is administered by the State of California's Employment Economic EDD Office, Employment Development Department. They have an office in Oakland near Hagenberger, but we can give you the correct contact person and even the manager there is willing to talk to any of you. So just let us know. This gives you up to 40% of the first $6,000 of the first year of wages for an employee. If you hire them in certain categories, the state gives you a tax credit, okay? So that you would realize this when you file your taxes at the end of the year. And some of those categories are formerly incarcerated persons, unemployed veterans, youth that are out of school. So the trick is you have to have that voucher signed before they start one day of work, but we can walk you through that process if you're interested. So those are just some of the things that are available to you right now that, you know, give you a little more cash in your hand, give you a rebate so that you can use that money for your own operations.
So now I'm going to talk to you a little bit about programs and organizations that focus on business advising. Here in Alameda County, a big resource is the Small Business Development Center and they offer free individualized one-on-one advising for existing businesses and also startups. And their advisors specialize in anything from business plans, retail, even international trade and also home-based businesses. So it's really connecting you to those advisors that are in your industry. Another program that exists is, it's based out of San Francisco, but they serve the entire Bay Area and they're called Renaissance Entrepreneurship Center. And they really focus on starting your business and they offer workshops and small business training as well as some access to capital. Then we have Score East Bay. This is an organization that's made up of volunteers that, you know, are retired executives or, and they really mentor you and counsel you. And it's, again, it's free because it's volunteer-run. We have another program called ICA Fund Good Jobs Education Program, and this is focused on growth strategies for small businesses. And this one's, there is a cost to it, but the organization offers scholarships for it. Finally, if you're in the manufacturing industry, there's an organization called Manix Consulting and they do no-cost audit or consultation for your operational efficiencies. And so these are some good resources to take advantage of. Now, we all care about capital, right? When you're a small business, sometimes you get turned down by the traditional banks. So thankfully, there's a couple of programs that look beyond just the credit score. These are actually nonprofit community development financial institutions. And one is, one of our members, Working Solutions. And what they do is they provide microloans and they focus on minority, so they serve low-income individuals, women and minority businesses. And their loans range anywhere from $5,000 to $50,000. And the things that's unique about this program is that once you become a client, the loan comes with five years of advising. So they coach you throughout the process, through the length of the term of the loan. Another one that we have as a member is called Pacific Community Ventures, and they're also a nonprofit. And their small loans and microloans range from $10,000 all the way to $50,000. And in the back, I have a handout on what the eligibility requirements are for those type of loans. But again, this is another resource that's available to you. Opportunity Fund also focuses on providing microloans for entrepreneurs and small businesses. And they target those businesses that are too small to get a traditional loan. And their median loan is about $18,000. The Northern California Loan Fund is really for nonprofits and social enterprises and they finance working capital and real estate projects. And these loans range all the way up to $3 million with flexible terms. Next, the Small Business Administration offers or participates in various types of loans. These include general business loans, microloans, disaster loans and real estate and equipment loans. And these are guaranteed by the federal government, so they really just vet your company, your business plan, and they refer you to the local lenders throughout the region. And most of the time, these are community banks or otherwise. I put up here a Veteran Launch because this is a program that's administered through Main Street Launch in Oakland. And it's really to finance, their loans for veterans and their families. And these loans are from $25,000 all the way to $250,000. So there's more information in the back about all these programs. And then finally, I think someone mentioned about loans for commercial real estate or fixed assets. Well, TMC Financing does that through SBA 504 Loan, and there's more information in the back.
Thank you, Luis. I'm David and with East Bay EDA, I'm an analyst. So I'll be fairly quick to let you guys get into your joint study session here. So there's two things I want to point out with tax credits. One is the manufacturing and research development equipment exemption. So that effectively makes your manufacturing equipment sales tax rate 5.6%, which you won't have to pay the full 9% at the local level when you make that purchase upfront for your business. Additionally, we, there's also the disabled access credit at the state level that'll help you get into ADA compliance so that you aren't susceptible to ADA litigation. So some certifications that you guys can pursue at the regional and the state level. These are mostly for marketing purposes to help your business land on a preferred list of vendors. You can become a green business, which is administered through the county, a minority or a women-owned business, which is administered through the SBA. For us, Valameda County has a SLEB program or a select preferred vendors list program that is required for us to use when we go out for contracts and bids. So you guys can apply to become a SLEB business and then we're required to go out when we contract out to outside vendors. And then finally, the utility programs that Chad touched upon, the one that I really want to point out is Stop Waste. They have a revolving loan fund that will lend you guys up to $15,000 to make your business more green, more sustainable. And you can contact us to get more information about that as well. In addition, Luis and I and Darian will be here after your joint study session to ask you any questions. And we also have collateral in the back for you guys to gather as well.
And I encourage you to go to our website, www.eastbayeda.org. You can get all of this information free online. We just wrote out our annual East Bay Economic Outlook Report, so you can get a copy, it will ask you to answer three questions or so, and then you can get a free copy of the report. We also do the East Bay Book of List every year in December. So that's a free listing of organizations that help small businesses by categories like international, access to cash, workforce development. So you can look that up and get a free copy online. And the last one is that we do market the region as a place of innovation, and I do believe Emeryville had a winner this year. So read about that and that's also available online. So we hope that some of you will nominate other companies for the Innovation Awards in 2008 or get, self-nominate yourself. It brings a lot of marketing cachet to the cities when companies make it on this list. Okay, so, yeah. And we're available for questions later on.
Thank you, Darian, Luis, David. Appreciate that. And with any of those programs, you know, there's information at the back table. You can contact East Bay EDA or you can contact me and we can connect you to these resources and help, and help pilot through them. So before we get to the listening session, I kind of wanted to explain what we'll do with this input. We're going to hear from you all. And the next steps after this is we will, staff will take all of the input we received. Some of it has come independently for folks that couldn't make to the meeting. And we're going to distill it into a document, a list of initiatives, topics. And we're going to return to the city council at a future date to be determined at a regular meeting. And at that meeting, it's our aim to prioritize and assign the And at that meeting, it's our aim to prioritize and assign the topics that come out of this meeting. And so you will be able to see, and we'll let you all know when that is scheduled, make sure that everyone's aware. You'll be able to track the input you make today through the process and see, and see it manifest into concrete things. So we, and lastly, I want to mention that we're in the process of updating the Economic Development Strategic Plan, overall plan for economic development in the city. The Economic Development Advisory Committee has been working on this for about a year, established a subcommittee for that purpose. And the Economic Development Advisory Committee, for anyone here who's interested in these kinds of topics, meets every other month on the odd-numbered months, the third Wednesdays at 11:30 at City Hall. And by attending those meetings, they're open to the public, you can provide input through that venue as well, and help guide the economic development strategy. With that, we want to hear what you want. And before we, but before we do that, I want to give away, we're going to give away some stuff. So if Emmy could grab the remote mic.
Thank you for attending, and as I said, those of you that brought your business cards and dropped them off, we have a couple of items to give away. One is this smart thinking.
The mic, the freehand mic. Actually, I am, I'll come and get it from you. And we want to hear a couple of things. We want to hear challenges that you all face doing business. We also want to hear solutions to those challenges. And this is, imagine this is an unconstrained environment. I mean, this is blue sky, there's no limits. Whatever, even if it's a crazy idea, it's actually, especially if it's a crazy idea, we'd like to hear it. We want to hear how, how we can address challenges that you all face. We're going to be taking them all down on paper, and we'll go as long as we have time and as long as folks want to talk. So with that, I'm going to go get the mic, and we'll start, we'll start taking some input. Yes, and if you would state your name, it's helpful to know which business you're from as well, you know, before you start your comments. We'd ask too, that you keep, comments as succinct as you can. Don't, you know, try not to repeat things that are said by folks prior to you, other than say, "Yeah, I agree with that so-and-so." Again, this is meant to be listening, so that will open the floor. Who would like to go first? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Paresa Paimani. I live and work in Emeryville, the owner of Emeryville Chiropractic. And I just want to thank all of you that had set up this plan. I have been working in Emeryville for 17 years, and I have been looking forward to meet my neighbors, whether they live here or they work here, and I'm very glad for those that I was able to greet. And I want to thank all of you that made this happen, and it's really nice to see you all at the same time under the same roof, because when you come to the planning commissioners' meeting, you miss the city council meeting, or vice versa. So I want to thank all of you. It's wonderful, and it's a dream come true for me after 17 years. With that said, the area that I work is in, close to Amtrak Station, and one of the problems that I have is, it's wonderful to see these developments happen, but it would be better to put a little bit more thought into it in terms of parking. Because of the nature of my job, it's hard for me to tell my five-and-a-half-months-pregnant woman to walk four blocks to come and see me, and people that have migraine headaches and about to toss their cookies, I can't tell them to circulate around for another 45 minutes to come and see me. So it was an arduous process that I was able to, being persistent, to come up with some solution with my landlord. But it would be really nice for the planning commissioners' meeting, as well as the city council, to tell these developers, if you want to develop something here and you have hundreds of workers on site, please do not park on public properties. These are for us, not for you rich people. You have garages, use your own garages, or allocate a site, or rent a space from the city, and put all your workers on that site. I go to workout in the morning, and by 6:00 AM, the entire 62nd, 59th Street, entire Powell Street ramp underneath it, it's already, there are all cars. And they're there from 6:00 AM to 5:00 PM. And after six months of fighting and fighting and fighting in order to shut me up, they finally brought me a solution. So I would really appreciate if the future endeavors, please tell these developers to have their own designated parking space. It's not fair for my patients to pay $7 an hour when they're only in my office for 15, 20 minutes to pay for a public parking. And, and I have one more thing, but I don't want to take it anymore.
We can always come back. So contractor parking in particular for new, for new projects, and making sure that there's available parking for patrons and employees, yes.
My name is Ruslana. I represent a Yuzu Ramen on 65th Street, and I'm also a member of Economic Development Advisory Committee, thanks to Chad. It was very nice to listen to you. You said you are in Emeryville like for 17 years. We are like about only eight months, so I have a very fresh experience, which I really would like to share with you guys and John, and, sorry, I'm a little bit nervous. I think as a new business, we really face a certain problems, which I was extremely lucky to resolve just because I met Chad, and I really would love to thank you for all the support and help you provide to us. Because I was a person who really opened the full business in Emeryville, so like from step one to like still now, so I really kind of know on my own skin how it was. And I think what I feel is really necessary to have a person in a city, maybe kind of contact person, where we can go and get all the details we need as a business to start a business in Emeryville, or even now, when I have some ongoing problems. It was really hard. I mean, I have to use my personal, because I was personally meet with Chad, and I could send him email and ask, what is the best way to do, this way or this way? I was lucky, but I'm pretty much sure there is a lot of people who just starting business here, and they don't have that access directly to Chad, as example, right? So I really feel a big necessity to have a certain, I don't know, you can call it whatever you want, like liaison or whatever you want, but it should be some kind of group or even person who we as a business know that we can go and ask any type of questions, and especially this legal issues, licensing, it's really all type of questions, even, even the signage. I mean, you know, this temporary sign, $500. So it's really a lot of, a lot of stuff we have to find out. And that's what I really would like to say, that I feel that we really need this person. Because we have certain problems, like even, you know, a tree on our property die, and we want to plant another tree, and it was a big headache to find out if we can plant the tree, or no, we cannot plant the tree, because we have to plant special height of trees. So I mean, you know, it really takes a lot of our time, which we can, you know, use for developing our business, improve the life of the community here. We have a lot of people coming to our restaurant, and we really want to put our effort to provide service and doing our business, not thinking about this tree planting, you know? Thanks.
Thank you. So that's, falls in line with the liaison ambassador type program. I saw your hand up earlier.
Because I'm not very good at remembering, I'm actually writing mine down. Thank you for hosting this event. Also, special thanks to John for initiating it. So first of all, on my background, I've owned and operated a business in Emeryville since 2005, so next year will be our 13th year. I co-own it with my partner, Robert Surinrock, we're at East Bay Pilates. We used to be in the Bessler Building behind City Hall, and we moved when Park was renovated to 1522 Park Avenue. When we initially opened the business and we chose Emeryville, because it had a vibrant and active business community, among those business leaders some of you may know were Peter Lonan, Pedro Lonan, as we, who speak Dutch, call him, founder of Digital Arts College, Tom Frenier, CEO of Semifredies, Albert from Rudy's Cafe. There were a very strong Chamber of Commerce. Since the shutting down of the Chamber, as well as for several years leading up to that, the positive and supportive climate has been on what I would call a steep decline. It hit an ultimate low point during the period of the MWO and the Fair Work Week, where many businesses felt there was a lack of communication, but also an unwillingness to work with businesses to find solutions that would be beneficial to the realities of owning and operating a business in our small town. Here's the first reality. So fixed costs exponentially, for those of you, business owners, this is nothing new, right? Our rent goes up, our healthcare goes up, our cost of goods, cost of labor, cost of living. I initially, I have two employees that now can no longer afford to come to Emeryville because of the drive and the commute, all those things combined. However, there is not a rise exponentially in customers, or customers willing to pay more for services. And I think that is something that neither the council or the planning commission have recognized. So over the past 12 years of running a business in this area, here are the issues that I think are vital to economic growth of small business, as well as a general enhancement of both resident and business life in Emeryville. One, I think there should be a position on the city council of one representative from the small business community. Small business needs a consistent representative. That is, if the city really wants to support small business. The city should get behind the support of a single payer healthcare option to decrease the cost of healthcare for small business owners. I think small businesses need the backing of a citywide PR and marketing strategy. You mentioned Chad, buy local, shop local. I've never seen anything about that in Emeryville, except what Little City Emeryville has tried to kick off. We struggled getting money and those kind of things. The city should work with regional and local players to assist business in capital loans and other financial opportunities to help grow their business. If that's what you guys are doing, a little power to you. I think more businesses need to know about it, need to have a personal rep in order to get information. I think the city should also work with little organizations like Little City Emeryville, who have tried on their own to get going, to promote small business and help each other. I think small business and medium-sized business, as you pointed out, what's quarter of the revenue, is a major bulk of revenue for the city, so it should be rewarded, enhanced, and cultivated through policies and incentives, and not just one-off meetings for brainstorming. I also think that there should be a moratorium on policies that are really negatively impacting businesses. I know in our area, we've lost several businesses. I think the, those of you who are in food service, restaurant business, more hat off to you, it's a rough time for you guys. It's also a rough time for everybody else, because at the end of the day, what impacts one business impacts all of us. So if the other businesses are struggling, we're all to go and struggle. Sorry to take you.
Thank you, thank you. I walked by, I walked by a hand that was up to go back there.
Hi, I'm Louise Engel, Estate Management Services. I've actually had a license in biz, in Emeryville for over 20 years. And you might recognize my name, I campaigned last fall. It was actually a great experience. A suggestion on the solution side to actually build upon what was just expressed regarding the city helping promote small business. We have the Emory Go Round, and I know that it promotes the arts by having both poems and art and such that are advertised. How about having twice monthly rotating business, let's say, highlights at the noon time, they're going, let's say, going to various food places or cafes? That would get our business people out exploring different parts of the city. Or we also have a number of coffee roasting companies, or companies that, as part of their cafe, provide specialty coffee services. And there are a number of those spaced throughout the city, that might be another theme. I'm sure that our Economic Development Commission could come up with other themes. But these, we have the Emory Go Round. It provides a great shuttle service to each of us, both the commute time, but also midday, and getting those people during the week out to our businesses on some sort of theme basis, I think would be a really good, helpful service to small business.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah. Let's move in the back.
Rob Arias, evili.com. I wanted to give a plug for the Bringing Back the Assad Program. My buddy Jonas Bernstein just had to leave. He owns Rotten City Pizza, and he said that would be something beneficial to him. So plug for Bringing Back the Assad Program, so he could help his business. I'm also part of Little City Emeryville, along with Chris. We came up with a list of about eight or 10 recommendations, you know, that we brainstormed from talking to other small businesses, and I think Susannah is going to provide those to you, so. Okay, good, good. So I'm not going to rehash those. I've been a small business advocate, like, since day one, and going back to Cafe Aquarius, if you remember that. And that really ignited the fire underneath me, when I realized that nobody had their back, you know? And I did my best to fight for them. I created petitions, and, you know, despite all this effort that I put into it, they went under, you know? And the city, you know, couldn't do anything. So I decided to kind of carry on the torch of trying to fight for small businesses. So during the minimum wage ordinance, you know, clearly I felt like small businesses got the shaft there. What I would like to see personally, and something that would be beneficial to me, when Oakland ran out the, their small business initiative, Measure FF, you know, they did a little bit of awareness campaign. Sal was there with, along with Chris Hilliard from his cafe, and I think it was called Fair Wages Taste Better, or something like that. And I don't think there was any follow-up after that, but they at least tried to educate the consumer that, hey, your prices are going to go up a little bit, you know, but this is the cost of paying a fair wage. So there's some in denial that this is having any impact at all on the costs of food. I mean, I don't see how you can honestly, you know, not realize that. I mean, I go to Rudy's Can't Fail. It used to cost me 30 bucks for me and my wife to get breakfast there. It's 45 bucks now. I mean, I can't afford that anymore. And I'm a middle-class guy. A BLT, you know, a coffee at Scarlet City is, you know, almost $5. So, you know, costs have gone up more than the 5% that our council has unfortunately kind of swept under the rug, you know? I think they referred to the Berkeley IRL E study, which said it would only go up about 5%. That's just not realistic, I'm sorry. So we need an awareness campaign. I'm tired of taking it on the chin for our council, you know, saying, trying to provide a realistic perspective that, what the minimum wage is doing. If you're proud of this, I know you are, please educate the consumer out there and tell them that this is the cost of paying a fair wage. Just be honest.
Thank you, thank you. So, so to try to recap, a customer-faced, a customer-facing campaign that helps communicate the, the minimum wage ordinance is a fact. Is that, did I get that in a single bullet point?
And the next time we do the one-year study with Mills, I would hope that they address the talking points of the minimum wage a little bit better, like, how much did prices go up? Did people lay off people in order to, you know, balance their books? You know, there was just a lot of talking points that did not get addressed, or more people living in our city and working in our city, which was a big talking point, I think, of the minimum wage as well. So those are the things we need to address in the study, and they were not addressed. It was a flawed study.
So focus the future review of the minimum wage on more specific topics, I think is what I'm hearing there, so.
Hi, my name is Mauro Rivero. I'm a partner over at Black Bear Diner in Emeryville. In reference to what Rob was mentioning right now, just, this past month, Harvard University came out with a study on how the minimum wage, and the study was concentrated here in the Bay Area. And I did send a copy of Chad, and I'm not sure he had a chance to pass it on to some of the other members of the city, but how those costs are really affecting us, and when city councils and their desire to do well, which we all understand, like last year, and the last few years passed, these minimum wage increases, which we understand were needed and were, came from a good spot in the heart of the supporters, but have really impacted what it has done to small businesses. And as you guys, in the future, go forward with more regulations or increases to the cost of doing business, I hope you will be more attentive to how I hope you will be more attentive to how it's impacting all of us. We are trying to succeed and grow. And what I mean succeed, stay open, provide employment for employees. And so, you know, that's one of the things that, that in the last four, I've been doing business here for four years now. And overall, it's been pleasant, but, you know, the last few years where the costs went up and we've had had to increase our costs to keep pace with everything else that's been going up. The cost of, obviously the cost of labor, rent is going through the roof. And I'm not sure what can or can't be done on that front. But I hope you guys, you know, will be more tuned to those, what we're facing versus the prior city council's members from, you know, last year, who, some of them aren't here anymore, who were really pushing those increases on us. And the last point I wanna make, does the city of Emeryville provide any low-cost housing for people? Do you guys do any building of that? So you guys are, I mean, because that's one thing that I do see that impacting employees. You know, we have, you know, we're having to, our employees are having to travel from far away, you know, to be able to come to work. And, you know, like I said, I've only been doing business here for four years in Emeryville, but I just don't know how extensive the city of Emeryville is providing housing for, for low-cost housing for, for locals. So, you know, if I need to be educated on that, then all ears. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mauro. Chad, when we're done, let's make sure we come back to that point. Yes, okay, thank you. Exactly. And, and yeah, I can, I can actually provide some input on that as well to you.
Hi. Thanks for mayor, everyone else. My name is Armon. I'm with Evocative Data Centers. We just acquired a data center in Emeryville on 65th Street about three months ago. So the question is, does Emeryville or would that be maybe Alameda County have any act, any plans for a community choice aggregation program?
Love to talk to you about that. Yes, that's well underway and we can revisit. That's another one, maybe it's a flag to talk about at the end to sort of bring folks up to date. Okay, thank you. All right, Mauro?
Hi, my name is Michael Johnson. I'm with Adeline Collective. And I've been working on opening a restaurant in Emeryville, right on the corner of San Pablo and Adeline, where Martin McArthur Street is. And one of the problems that I found was the developmental impact fee. And I was lucky enough to be referred to Chad from the SBA, from Lee Lambert. He told me about Chad. And we've been talking about the facade grant. And so hopefully that'll be something that'll come to pass pretty soon.
Thank you, yes.
Hi there. Thank you for having a noon meeting. It's nice. I work a lot in the evening, so I often don't get to go to things unless they're in the daytime. I own the martial arts studio across the street. And I have a couple of questions really, more than problems that I'm having. One is, is there any attempt or is there a venue that I can go through to get more bike racks put on the main street to help A with parking and encourage people to bike so they don't have to drive? And the second thing is signage. I don't know if there's any, I know you have a design department that helps people. Well, I don't know if they help people, but they charge fees. You have to pay for permits and go through a design review board and all of those things. But on the other side of that, is there anybody that helps? We have a strip of several businesses where I am. And we're looking to get some kind of consistent signage up that meets the city's requirements and helps us have visibility on both sides of San Pablo. And we're constantly getting tagged, at least my sign is. And so we're constantly repainting or trying to, you know, deal with the fact that signage keeps getting vandalized. So if you have any suggestions, I'd appreciate them.
Could you tell us your name?
Oh, Terry Gil Martino.
Thank you. Yes, and we can follow up with that. So when you say signs though, I wanna make sure I get that correct. For a multi-tenanted building? Okay, got it.
Hi, everyone. I want to thank you for putting on this event, all of you. It's, it's really important and your support and commitment is very important. My name is Sharon Asensio. And I provide accounting services to small businesses and individuals. Been in business for about 35 years. I live and work in Emeryville. And it, little, all, everything that's been said today is so important. But my comment is something a little simpler. And I would like to see us get together and network more. I think that as a small business owner, you're isolated because you're generally working by yourself or you have a business, you have your employees, but you don't have other people to talk to about your business, about your issues, about employee problems, about generating new business, about marketing your business. And wouldn't it be nice if we had a group of people here in Emeryville that we could meet with and talk about all these things that pertain to our businesses? And we could provide services to each other? I think that's really critical for a small business. Thank you.
Thank you. So opportunities for networking, for sure.
Hi, my name is Jeffrey Croweber. I'm, I run the Townhouse Bar and Grill. We are in our 28th year of being in business. Last year, we saw a $200,000 increase in our payroll due to the MWO. That $200,000 to offset that, we would need to see a $650,000 to $700,000 increase in sales to just be back to where we were. Now, that $200,000, with the exception of two dishwashers, went to the tipped employees. And the back of the house, used to make five, six, seven dollars more an hour than the minimum wage, are now pissed off because they're only making two or three. And they want more money. And I can't give them that money because can't run a restaurant with a 45% labor cost. There's just no way. So we're at this point now that at the end of this year, our 28th year, if we don't have a profit margin that makes it viable for us, we'll leave. Because we can't stay in business here. Besides the $200,000 increase in the MWO, we have a 100-year-old building that's $50,000 just maintaining that, as you can imagine. And it's just going harder and harder. Now, we have a following and we can go elsewhere. We wouldn't like to. We'd like to stay here. But unless there's a tipped employee credit for minimum wage, it ain't gonna happen.
Thank you. Tipped employee, yeah, okay, you got it. All right, yes. I'll get you, I'll get you in there.
Hi, my name is Jacqueline Turner. I have Jacqueline Spa in Emeryville, but I'm right above the Scarlet City Cafe. And I, our street is, there's a side street called Yerba Buena. And that's the side where the garage is, but also side where people walk their dogs and animals and things like that. People just use that side street to hurry to get to Adeline. And it's really, I've been almost T-boned a couple of times. Once just this morning on my way to Pilates. But is there a way to get a speed bump or some type of signage out there to say, slow down? I mean, because it's really getting bad over on that side, Yerba Buena Street. Thank you.
Thank you. Some traffic coming, that location.
Sorry about that for the second time. Just to share the same sentiment, you're from Townhouse. I love your place and been there many times. I, I just wanna say that our notion of minimum wage was a great idea, but the fact that Emeryville went ahead and on top of that added to it and bombarded all of us business owners with posters and posters and threats and threats, and if you don't do it, and this and that. It's great, but just so you know, for my businessman, operating expense went up 55%. And that doesn't go to the person that I'm paying a rent to, that the developer is plenty wealthy and doesn't have a problem with that. But they basically hand down that expense to us. And for me to, all of a sudden, be not paying 55% for this year, but tell us from the previous year, you have to pay this lump sum of money because that's when it started, is enormous. I really love to work and live in Emeryville and I have no plans of moving to Fresno. So anything you guys can do and with your regulations and just kind of like hear our voices before making these decisions would be very much appreciated.
Okay, thank you. All right, we're back up here. I don't wanna miss anyone in the corners.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for being here. Thanks for putting this on. We appreciate it. My name's Alvin. I'm one of the managers and owners at Best Coast Burritos. We're a new restaurant that's been here for only about a year and a half. But my extended family, we've been doing a restaurant here in Emeryville since the late 80s. So we've been here a long time. But we just rebranded and started on the corner of Hollis and Powell. A couple of things. The first thing I wanted to kind of share with you is that I'm thinking about changing our restaurant's name to Best Coast Valet Service. Because just today alone, I had to talk to two customers who came in my restaurant and asked if they could park within the Chevron parking lot. It's not really a parking lot. I mean, it's a gas station. There's a couple stalls there and I'm fortunate to have some of those stalls. But what they tell me is, hey, I, I can't find any parking around here. And I suggest to them, how about the parking garage at the terraces? It's full. How about down the street? You know, that's full. Would have you driven around? Yeah, yeah, yeah. Can I buy a burrito and park here? I'll be just be for a few minutes. What they mean is a few hours or more. So I tell them where to park. I tell them, you know, maybe you can just park on the corner. But try your best, like, please, you know, it's, it's almost lunchtime. You know, I probably need these spots. So again, the parking thing is a real thing. It's, it's real. The other thing too is that I don't know where parking enforcement is in the line of, you know, to-do list for you guys, but I don't think it has teeth. I don't even think the parking enforcement has dentures. You guys really should look into parking enforcement because it can make you guys money. If you guys put up meters or what the city of Oakland does with the little paper receipts, make money. You guys like making money. Make money on parking enforcement. And that way, the two-hour parking or the one-hour parking, people actually respect it and they will actually move. And so when people visit our town, they feel like they can actually get a parking spot. So I think a lot of businesses will do that. And the other thing too is that sometimes I see, you know, employees and workers of other businesses, they just park on the street. You know, think about something to do with that too. Like start an area where the city owns that workers who work in the city of Emeryville can, you know, I think they would be gladly happy to pay a, you know, a monthly fee to know, hey, I can park at that lot every single day. It'll be there for me and I can walk to, you know, wherever I need to work. So think about that. Make some money, you know, enforce the parking. And, you know, people will take everything a lot more seriously and everybody will benefit. That's something that you guys should totally put at the top of your list because you guys can make money on it and would make us happy too. Other thing, because of minimum wage, our expenses went up $125,000 last year. Probably go up another same. So you're talking about, if anybody has a quarter million dollars to lend me in the next year or year and a half, happy to take it. So I'll leave it at that. Thanks, guys.
Okay, thank you, Alvin. Parking management, for sure. And, yes, sir.
Hi, everyone. My name is Om. I'm the co-owner of a 6121 restaurant. We just took over from a book change like last year and we have been opening for like two months. Very nice to meet you all. And it's not really my issue, but I'm thinking of like now, Emeryville, it's just like a city that people escape from the freeway. So like, for example, they get out of San Francisco and they stop by, you know, Holly Street or like San Pablo to go like a Berkeley or even like Oakland. But I don't seem like, is there any advertisement for supporting for the small business to be more attractive? For, you know, people who are driving on the freeway, are driving out of the street so they can see us? So that, you know, people might, you know, visit us and, you know, more entertaining for, you know, every restaurant, every, you know, party, right? So, sorry, my English is not quite good, but I'm trying to explain like what I have seen so far. And, yeah, so it would be some of like sign, you know, before, because I always, I'm living in San Francisco, but I chose Emeryville because I like, I like here. I like this area. It's such a good place and quiet and, you know, like very good environment. So just wanna make sure that you could wanna do like any sign or big signature that shows up here is Emeryville. Right now, I don't see any sign that here is Emeryville. All right? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Marketing, identity, signage, yes.
Hello, my name is Karen from Jasmine Blossom Thai. We're right on Hollis Street near 65th. We've been there about four years now. Some of the things that we're concerned with and minimum wage has already been talked about, so I don't wanna go into it again. There's some other things though that are out of our control such as safety. So there are some dark spots that are basically not very well lit, especially at night. So our customers, sometimes they're impacted. When they leave, they end up coming back to tell us that their car was broken into only a block away or so because there's certain areas where it's just super dark. And so you'll just see like a whole section where multiple cars, their glass is broken. And sometimes just nothing is taken, but they just break in because they know those are the quote-unquote safe spots. So if there's something that can be done, and I, I know I just talked to the mayor about this, but that's not the only spot in Emeryville where there are these incidents that happen. I don't know, we need more cameras, more lighting. And I personally don't even know how to go about requesting more lighting and making the case. I know the mayor mentioned that, you know, working with the police chief where they have more data about the concentrated crime areas could help. But that is something that impacts the business as well. We've probably lost customers because now they no longer wanna eat there for dinner if they think that is not a safe place to come to. Another thing I wanna talk about is I live in Emeryville. So I, and I rent, so I know firsthand how much the rent has skyrocketed. None of our employees can even afford to live here. I think it's ridiculous that there is no affordable housing. I know that there's, there are some affordable units, but I don't think there's enough. I think there's so many developers coming and building these luxury apartments, which is nice for the city. It looks great. But it doesn't make sense from a labor perspective if our employees have to come from very far away. So that was to echo what Mauro was saying. Another thing is, going back to parking. I know that, I missed your name, Paris. So you mentioned parking from contractors. That's not the only thing I'm seeing. Now that we have more developers building residential units, I feel that perhaps they're not building enough parking spaces for their residents because, like I said, I live here. So even on the weekends, I see cars all over the street. And on weekdays, there's no parking anywhere in even any of the garages. So I think it's becoming a larger and larger issue. That's also a turnoff when customers really wanna go somewhere and they find that, or they know ahead of time that there's not gonna be any parking.
All right, thank you.
Hi, my name's Mike Selmaier. I'm the commercial broker for Equity Residential at the Park on Powell Development. Heard a lot about the community and we listen to that. So I'm not here to put anybody down about policies, politics, any of that. I just wanna let you guys know that we have gotten very creative with the deals that we've gone after. We have a pharmacy that we landed. We have One Medical, Dr. James Lu back here. You know, so there's, there's a lot of things that we've seen and we're not making decisions on, on those things. So we're just trying to be creative with the tenants that we're bringing in. And so, you know, to say that the minimum wage hasn't affected that, you know, it is what it is. And so we've gone past that. We're, we're okay with it. But, you know, we're, we are pro-business ourselves. It's not about just getting the highest rent. It's more about what's good for the community and what our neighbors need. And, you know, so if anybody has any questions, please reach out, reach out to me. My website's mspsinc.com or Main Street Property Services. Thanks.
Thank you. It's about to index to, well, it depends on whether you're a large or small business. But for small businesses, it's about to index to $14 an hour.
Hi, I'm Marilyn Boucher. My husband and I own The Broken Rack. I'm also a member of EDAC. And Chad might have mentioned, if you want to be too, everybody's term is expiring, so you can join the fun. I want to comment about two things. One, piggybacks on what Krishna was talking about, and I believe Susan is your name, was talking about networking. And networking, it seems to me, is a natural function of a business organization. I mean, the Chamber used to do that. I believe that the city of Emeryville really needs a small business organization, one that is devoted to our interests, to informing small business owners, to helping small business owners make connections, increasing the connections between us and the, and this community. Little City Emeryville tried to do that, but frankly, what we found out is we need money, you know, and small business owners are very busy, you know, so they can't be running an organization on their own. An organization to thrive needs to have at least some kind of part-time director. And maybe then we could do insurances or something like that. We need some place to function out of. And I'm just saying that if the city could help us, whether it's Little City Emeryville or something else, a true grassroots, small business organization, that would really help us in many ways and the community in many ways. I understand that the city used to give some sort of subsidy to the Chamber of Commerce. And you can't start a organization by asking people to put in a lot of money when they're already, you know, having difficulties staying in business. So that's another reason why I think it can't be purely on our own. We need some kind of help. The other thing is, I want to come back to the MWO, even though it has been covered. And I think originally, perhaps the city and planning board looked at this as a meeting where we could explore non-wage issues that through city policies, you could ameliorate some of the onerous effects. And, and those are good. And I've seen very many good, concrete examples of things that the city and other organizations can do to help us. But the truth is, for the mass majority of us, there is nothing you could do that will have more impact on us than the minimum wage ordinance. And the minimum wage ordinance isn't what it is. I mean, nobody thinks it's going to be repealed. Nobody thinks that anybody is going to lower wages ever. I wouldn't be in favor of that myself. But there are still increases going on, and I want to, that are scheduled. And I want to second what some other people have said. I looked at the last two quarters of 2015, which was the first six months under the 1225 minimum wage, and compared it to the last two quarters of 2016, which was the first six months under 13. And I went from having a net operating profit to having a net operating loss. And although there were other factors, the most large by far was the increase in payroll. And that's not with increasing hours. In fact, I would be hiring more people for more hours if the wage weren't going up as it is. And my revenue was a little up, not a lot, but a little. So, you know, right now, I still had a net operating income that was positive for last year. But when I look at it going up again to 14 and then 15 and then 15 plus plus, I just have to wonder if that's sustainable. And so what I'm asking, the city council in particular, is I think, I believe that when this was passed, people thought, based on the Berkeley study or whatever, you know, this isn't going to impact businesses. Business will be okay, da-da-da. Well, I think there's, now, you must all be aware that there's a lot of stuff, a lot of studies, all studies don't agree on that. And there's more and more stuff in the press, various types of press, about difficulties businesses are running into because the MWO. So I'm really urging you to go back and have a second study and to keep an open mind about not whether you would reduce or do away with the minimum wage, but maybe step off the escalator before you get to the top floor and wait for general wages elsewhere around the state to catch up. So that's my request.
All right, let me come to the other side of the table.
Thank you all. This has been great. And my name is Sal Bradnorz. I, until recently, I was the owner and operator of Actual Cafe, not an Emeryville business, but very nearby. And had to close the doors on that business because I couldn't sustain it with the payroll at 45%. But it's me in a position where I'm thinking forward, which I think we all have the opportunity to do. I've heard a lot of great things in this room about collaborating and networking and resourcing with the city, resourcing outside the city, thinking regionally. I think all those are important. The city of Oakland formed a small business task force. I'm sure any of you are aware. And we identified all of the pressures that we're talking about, as happening also in Oakland, along with some others. Increasing rents, increasing cost of living, increasing wages, decreasing liability for workers to live, especially for some of these forces are much bigger than me or we. And to come up with interesting solutions to those problems. Small business people, you who are here in this room, you are my people. We're going to do this. We're going to do interesting stuff. So what I'm looking at is tremendous disruption, which is causing pain. It is causing pain, and that's real. It's causing pain, for real, it's causing pain. But it's also creating opportunity. And I think I would love to establish a strong dialogue between what's happening here in the city of Emeryville with regard to small business and what's happening in Oakland. Ideally include other partners like Berkeley and Richmond, San Leandro in the picture, the East Bay EDA folks. These are some great service providers who are doing good work for business assistance that are available to you here. A lot of them are based in Oakland. They're friends of mine. I love them. They're going to do more. They're going to do better because we're going to push them to do more and better. There are others, though, that aren't on that list that I would love to make sure that get added to that list. The, there are, you know, job incubation and business incubation centers springing up all throughout Oakland. They're not well-connected to each other. They're not connected to anything happening in Emeryville. I think a lot of the work that we have here is in connecting all this stuff together, communicating better, sharing our resources. I'm coming into this problem in the spirit of wanting to share. And to the extent that, you know, everybody here can meet me there, I think we together can, can do big things. So let's continue the conversation.
My name is Ray Wong. I'm operating ballroom called Lego Ballroom in Emeryville, Powell Street. We've been running this ballroom for over 20 years now in Emeryville, and we see the developments. And we see the, all the new businesses come in, small businesses, big businesses come in. And every time I heard everybody here saying it's a parking problem. Fortunately, we have about 200 parking space for our ballroom to serve our customer. But we still have a parking, parking problem. The problem is, number one, we have too much business. Of course, the parking is full, but this is nice to have, okay? And the bad, the worst thing is we got a lot of break-in. People were targeted to that parking lot because a lot of our customer, they come from all different places. They carry their purse, they carry something. They, some people forgot to left the purse in the car, it got break-in. So, so we have break-in, I cannot say every weekend, but, but very frequent. So we ask the, the police to give it running around every weekend. So they are, they are doing their good job. Okay. But this is the parking problem. But I know that a lot of small businesses, they don't have many parking space outside. So I was thinking, I don't know, it's a, it's a while, now the Uber is very popular. You can call, and then nearby people can, can come and pick you up, and then you just pay and then go to the certain, certain restaurant, a small business there. But why can we have something like a bike? I'm not talking about free bike. I'm talking a bike. I can, I can open my app and then check out where can I get a free bike or some bicycle. So we can ride a bicycle to go to a small business cafe and then put the bikes down there, and then we leave. And you don't have to, you don't have to do anything. Just put the phone, say, oh, I'm here. I'm finished using your bike. And that's it. And they will charge you a very minimal amount, maybe a dollar or something. Okay? In that case, all the small businesses, if you have a bike rack in front of your, your place, and people will ride that kind of $1 bike and come over to your place. And imagine now, we got so many of those apartments here, especially all move in, all the younger people. They don't mind riding bike because it's green. It's a gas car. Imagine all the apartment car in supposed to have their own parking space. Now they want to go out and have fun in the evening at the Emeryville nearby. They will go down and take a bike and go to a different restaurant to do. So it's a, it's a green cities for us, especially Emeryville. Such a beautiful city. I like to ride around with the shoreline. It's a beautiful weekend, weekday. We should promote. The city can help us to promote this is a green city, using more bike. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm glad you mentioned that because we actually are doing that. We're working to roll out Bike Share region-wide, and the city of Emeryville is very supportive of that and has put its own resources towards that end as well. Are we still?
Hi. Sorry to take the microphone again, but not everything's all bad. I have been very impressed with the response of Chad in the last year and a half that I've known him, to the concerns of the business community. And I've also wish I wasn't very involved with the Emeryville Police Department because of the break-ins. They are very responsive to, you know, the car break-ins, but there's not much they can do from what they've told me. Basically, it's considered almost a low-level crime, even if they do catch people, you know, unless they have some serious priors, there's, there's almost like catch and release. So I hope maybe you guys as city council members can follow up with our state legislators to see if they can get a little bit more tougher on these break-ins because it's really heartbreaking to see these families who are coming in for a nice meal and especially a lot of families from Berkeley and the community, and the colleges around here and hotel visitors. And they don't know any better. They leave their stuff out there and boom, it's gone. I mean, these, these, these crooks are just quick. And so I hope that you guys can send that message up to the state legislators to increase the penalties for these break-ins because, like I said, even when the police catch them, there's not much they can do. So what good is it to have enforcement of, for these traffic, for these car break-ins when they're going to let them go? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Louise Engel again. And to build upon what was talked about just here and by a couple other people on the policing, I think that we need more police presence, and that means more personnel. It takes several years through training and going through the various steps to be a police person in Emeryville. We have a tremendous increase we're all aware of during the daytime. But our, and our police force is doing an admirable job, but they need more staffing. They need more budget.
All right, thank you.
I have one final comment. First of all, again, thank you, everyone. I've operated in San Francisco for almost 20 years. So I guess everything is relative. I find this to be quite unusual, very welcoming, the fact that, you know, you've got mayors and city councils sitting there listening to people, whereas right across the bay, you basically are taking, you have absolutely no say whatsoever in how the city is conducted. So we're looking forward to growing in the city, and I want to thank you for taking the time to listen to us.
Thank you for coming. Thank you. Welcome to Emeryville. That's the way we do it. All right.
Hi there. My name is Drew. I operate a charter boat at Emeryville Marina. I moved here from Santa Fel about a year ago because they closed the fuel dock there. And it's no one particular person's problem, but it's just one of these issues where there's a certain amount of momentum positioned a certain way, the environment, but there's another side to it. We all operate on the water, all the charter boats, the sport fishing fleet, the water sports training facility, super pro environment. We organize beach cleanups, trash pickups, encourage environmental stewardship. No fuel dock, no businesses. So Santa Fel has no charter boats, no sport fishing fleet. We're here in Emeryville now. We appreciate you having us. And I just want to plant this seed real quickly. When it comes five or six years from now, when there is an issue with the fuel dock, you need to have a fuel dock in Emeryville because there are very few in the Bay Area. That's pretty much it. Thanks a lot. Have a good one.
Preserve the fuel dock. Excellent. All right. Did we catch everybody? Is there anything anymore out there? Yes.
Hi, I'm Dr. Magno from Emeryville Dental Care and at the public market. He called me out talking about teeth and dentures. I had this talk. But, so I've been here since nine, in the 1980s, when Emeryville was considered a toxic dump waste, right? And nobody knew where Emeryville was. So I moved to Emeryville because I was going to Berkeley. So I, I really enjoyed Emeryville when it was small. The rent control is horrendous. I mean, it's just, there's no rent control here, right? So, I mean, I've been losing patience because they're saying their rent has gone up $500 a month, and they give them for $1,000 a month, and they've been living there for a while. So people are having to decide where are they going to live, you know, I mean, where are they going to live in the Bay Area? And then, of course, that's taken away from the businesses because instead of buying things or food or taking care of their teeth, right, they have to pay for their, their housing. So that's one big thing. I'm not sure if there's, and I think there's some kind of rent control issue where if the houses are not built, or if they're built after 1975, there's no rent control, right? And also with, so that's, that's just my comment here. And, and then with the increased wages, I don't pay minimum wage, but just because all these other people are getting minimum wage, now my workers want to get paid double. So, but they don't do more. It's the same. It's like, they don't do more, right? They just want it because everybody else got an increase, right? And so I think there's another family unit condo that's being built here with, you know, a family unit with lots of kids. I don't really see kids, and that's good for me, no. But, you know, the traffic is really bad. So, I mean, I'd hate to see, like my kids, when they were growing up around this area, because then they could get run over. I mean, people are just driving crazy here. It wasn't, it never used to be like that. And I come late to work and leave late because I don't want to deal with traffic. But if I came here at eight, I mean, you can't even get out or get in or leaving at five. It's just, just to get out of the public market to the, to the freeway is about 10, 15, 20 minutes. I mean, it's just like, I could walk faster than that. Also, I used to leave my car unlocked. But, you know, no, yeah, those days are gone. I mean, it wasn't that long ago, but, you know, there was twice, because I stayed here or we were, I don't know why, but we were working here till 10:00. And there is a camera right on my car. And the public market or the police, you know, they didn't do anything, even though it's like, go look at the, go look at the it's like, go look at the, go look at the, you know, go look at the cameras. And they said, well, what they do is they, you know, break into your things, cross the Oakland border and then Emeryville can't do anything. So I don't know what they could do about that. But I got my things back because somebody saw my name with my social security number. It was my tax return. So I got my stuff back, but that was, that is not a good situation to be in. And so.
Thank you.
My name is George Martin. I am the part owner of the Georgia Martin Company, third generation. We've been in Emeryville since 1940. The family has seen Emeryville grow and change. And I would like to say we are in Emeryville and we're still in Emeryville. Folks, Emeryville has good sides and it has some issues, but it's not Berkeley and it's not Richmond and be happy for that. But I will say that through the years of our development and growth, Emeryville has been really good to work with in all aspects. We often have struggles, but in the end it works out and I can't say enough about Emeryville and working in Emeryville. So I just want to get a little positive stroke on that.
Thank you. That's fine. Great. Anything else out there? Anyone else want to? Right.
My name is John Nemeck and I'm running a small manufacturing company called the Suspender Factory. And I just want to tell you a bit about my background. I grew up in a very prosperous, small country in Europe called Czechoslovakia, which ultimately got bankrupted by socialism, just like the rest of the social Europe, Soviet Union and Cuba. Okay? So America was my ideal. I was delighted to come here. I had 20 bucks in my pocket when I landed in New York City and I had a great time. American people are very welcoming people here in North and they're supportive. And I basically served in US Army in the Vietnam era and I never collected one penny of unemployment, ever. I started a business in my garage making suspenders. And then basically when the mork and mindy era came, we made a ton of money. So basically we were hiring more people, hiring more people. Emeryville ultimately was very welcoming to businesses, I guess was under the mayor of Ken Bukowski and others, was delighted to move to Emeryville. Plenty of parking, welcoming by city officials. However, things have changed. Before the discussion started about a minimum wage, our company had 64 employees. Today, we have 42 employees and we continue laying people off. Now, you would think that the city council member care about holding small businesses in the city. I need to tell you this, that I don't want to be personal naming anybody, but I was told we don't care about your businesses that pays poverty wages and we will get some other businesses moving in. So we know where we are at. Okay? Basically, I'm not getting a paycheck with my wife. When the minimum wage went up, basically it wiped out all of our savings and all of our profit and it also destroyed the compensation structure. Because the people who used to make $16, $18, $20 walked out, they said the lowest performers got 40% increase. How about us? So I'm 71 years old. I don't plan to move anyplace. I'm finished and done. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. Okay. We've got about 10 minutes. Is there anyone else, anything to say? Oh, yeah. Well, let me, I haven't heard yet. Thank you.
My name is Asia. I'm one of the co-owners at Arizmendi in Emeryville. So we're a little bit of a different small business because we're cooperative. Everybody that works there is part owner. So with 15 owners and it constantly changes, it's a little bit different, but we kind of agree with all of these things, everything on here. So I don't want to repeat a lot of the things that's already been said. Something that we could use some help with is promotions and marketing, having new owners all the time. Nobody has a degree in promotions or marketing. We're bakers, you know? We get there, we bake pizzas and muffins and little things that we try and think of get kind of kicked down by the city or like putting an A-frame out in the median. We can't do that, but if you go like four blocks down, it's all of a sudden Oakland, there's tons of them. And there's people that come to our business and they're saying, hey, this is great. It's fresh bread in the morning. How long have you guys been here? And we're like 14 years. And you know, a lot of people have no idea we're there. We're pretty invisible, even though we're right there on San Pablo Avenue. It'd be nice to get things like the bike service or a parklet, which is apparently extremely hard to do when you are on San Pablo Avenue. So just things that we would like to kind of make our business a little bit more inviting and welcoming and visible, help with that and would be much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. One more.
One of the jewels of the city is, they mentioned is the Emeryville Go Round. That is one of the great things that the city has. I've traveled many cities. I don't see anybody offering a type of service like that. I use it a lot. You need to promote it more. A lot of the new employees that come on board with us, we give them the schedule of the Go Round and oh, we never knew they had anything like this here. And it's like, so that would be something that as you try to promote the city more and businesses, you know, for the visitors, Emeryville Go Round, that is one of the jewels of the city and I hope you really can promote that some more.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else? No?
Just the last word. I think if I was asked, you know, by the city council member, what would they, what would they sort of, what should they do, you know, for our business to prevent their layoffs and going out of business? I said freeze the minimum wage. You know, if you're concerned about higher rents, do a rent control. By the way, we have a higher minimum wage than Manhattan or New York City where I used to live, where the average apartment, one-bedroom apartment average price is $5,800. And we have a higher minimum wage here in Emeryville. So what I was asking, if the city could basically freeze the minimum wage or delay the increases in the minimum wage for people that have less than 55 employees. And I haven't heard back, so I don't know what the situation may be. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I just want to play a little devil's advocate here. I understand the problems. We've all experienced them, whether it's, you know, you have minimum wage issues at your place of work, whether your employees can't afford to live here. But you have to look at the big picture. In order to buy a piece of property here and pay the kind of taxes you have to pay, you can't then go after the people and say, you can't raise your rents past a certain point. You have to then cap the price of housing. You have to cap the price of taxes. You know, it all kind of works together. You can't just take one segment of something and try to hold it down because that's kind of artificial in a free market. So you have to figure out how to make the free market work better. I think there's a lot of people that are very small-minded when it comes to these issues. And so I'd like us all to think sort of larger and how it impacts everybody. I mean, if a developer comes in, I'm not a developer, but you know, in order for me to do a project, it has to be profitable to me. I have to be able to afford to come in, take the risk and then gain the benefit ultimately, right? Keep my apartments, you know, fully occupied, you know, all of those things. So while I feel for someone who's on minimum wage that can't afford to live in an apartment that's $2,000, you know, or more, you know, you have to look at all sides of it. That's the only thing I have to say because I live in Berkeley and it's very strange there, the way they run things. And I've lived there for decades.
Can we get Berkeley is Strange on the board? No. I'm kidding. Anyone else? Have we captured, okay, let me, I was going to ask if you all would take a look at the board and I want to make sure that we've captured what we're hearing.
I just wanted to say that I wanted to make sure that we all stay connected. I know networking was on there, but we make a point to, like all of us owners making a point to go out and frequent as many Emeryville businesses as possible, but a lot of them are kind of hidden and they're hard to find. And it'd be good to know, like, I don't know, just somehow have some kind of, I don't know, email or some kind of blast that we know, like there's new businesses here, come frequent them or some way that we could all be connected. I know that I kind of depend on Evil Eye to get all of my news and that's just me being on social media all the time. But it'd be better if, you know, the city had, you guys are kind of in the know a little bit more. So it'd be good if you guys can keep us all updated and maybe have, I don't know, festivals or something where we can all get out and say, hey, look at our little businesses and we're all here together, we're all working together within Emeryville.
In addition to networking events, it would be some sort of communication tool between the city and business community. I thought I saw another hand. Is that it? Did we capture everything? Didn't, you know, is for the most part, does the wall show? With the check marks indicating multiple comments, does the wall show and capture what the discussion was? Is there anything else? Okay. With that, Vice Mayor Bouders.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for coming and for sharing your ideas and for staff taking all these ideas down. I asked the mayor to just let me respond briefly to a few of the questions that were raised. We had a chance to hear from you. I just wanted to share a little bit of input back. The city council did sign letters of support both for a single payer health system, which is a state bill running right now, and in support of a bill for rent control. To the question about rent control, it's true that Emeryville may not actually legally rent control most of the housing in the city by over 90% of it due to a state law that's currently in place that prohibits that. But the city council has taken action both on single payer health and rent control recently. We are bringing Bike Share to Emeryville and there will be 10 Bike Share stations hopefully by the end of this year or early next year, I believe. And there is an app for that. I can't believe I just said it. There is an app for that. And so there will be, they are working with city staff to spot those around the city and then in the next two to three years, we're going to add 10 to 15 more. So there'll be about, network of about 25 at the most, I think, Bike Share facilities in the city of Emeryville, which will be connected to the rest of those in the Bay Area.
What, three in July?
Three in July is what Councilmember Martinez is telling me. As to break-ins and auto burglaries, this was studied specifically at the Public Safety Committee meeting last week. The police department, all crime categories in the city of Emeryville are down this past year with the exception of auto burglaries, which are up immensely. And this is a very difficult trend. It's not limited to Emeryville. It is a Bay Area problem right now, but our police department is studying this issue. They are, I have gone out with them on ride-alongs to look at how this crime is taking place. They're literally using spark plugs, ceramic pieces of spark plugs, and they can literally throw them at the window and it makes almost no noise and it completely cracks the window and shatters it. They can just walk through a parking lot and just toss them at the windows and it just breaks the windows. It's fascinating to see how it works, not that I recommend you do it. But something else for you to share with your customers that I didn't know until last week is a lot of people leave stuff in their trunk or they pull that cover over the back of their hatchback. And if you leave an iPad, a computer or a phone in the back of your car, even if it's on sleep mode or silent mode, what they're doing is they walk along with a Wi-Fi detector to detect your own device's signal. And when they get a signal along the back of a car, that's how they're selecting a lot of these cars. So you can inform your own customers by letting them know to turn something completely off or to bring it in if it's an electronic device. Councilmember Martinez is going to talk about choice aggregate in a second. And the only other two items I wanted to briefly mention on the affordable housing, the city council is considering approval of an all-family affordable housing building tonight, which would be on San Pablo. We just approved an RFP for an all-affordable senior housing site on San Pablo. We have given staff instruction for a permanent supportive housing site on San Pablo. And a year and a half ago, our development guidelines now require that developers who wish to build bigger or denser in the city must build more affordable units inside these market rate projects. So the city has actually taken a lot of very proactive steps on affordable housing. It takes some time between when things are approved and come online, obviously, but we are working on that. And the parking issue, the city has approved a study to go out to study the needs of parking citywide that will take place over the course of the year. And the hope is that by the end of the year, early next year, we will be doing some systemic review of parking. So I just wanted to address those brief items that I heard people mention, but really appreciate your input and feedback today and like Councilmember, oh, you have one.
I've got one. Thank you, Vice Mayor. I just wanted to touch on East Bay Community Energy. So we do have community choice aggregation that will be starting, launching in spring of 2018. And for those of you who don't know what that is, that will be an alternative to PG&E so that, you know, we as ratepayers will be able to make, put a focus on purchasing renewable energy and to support local business development because that's actually a part of East Bay Community Energy's plan is to support local business development. And so it's a joint powers authority that is the majority of the cities in Alameda County as well as the county of Alameda. And we were going full speed ahead. I've got a board meeting tomorrow night and it's going to be an opt-out program. So we're going to start with commercial accounts. So you'll all start seeing mailers and our goal, one of our number one goals is to have competitive rates with PG&E. So you're going to be able to decide for yourselves whether or not going green makes sense for you. But it is our goal to make it make fiscal sense for you. So we're going to want to be competitive with PG&E just to survive. So we hope to bring that to you in spring of 2018.
We do have plans for having parking controls in our city and parking enforcement that's real. And we're working on it. We are determined to do something about it and I think it will benefit everyone when we have these parking controls better situated in our city. I think it'll be better for small business, better for our residents, we'll get much better utilization. And I just, I've heard so many great ideas today and sometimes in the world of design, they have things called design charrettes. That's where people hear a problem and they start to think of solutions, usually starting with the insane solution. But then all of a sudden, when many people come up with different ideas, there are new ideas that are actually practical that get made as a result of thinking creatively about these problems. So I think that our council needs to interact with you on the wackiest of ideas that will winnow it down to something that we can really do to improve our business climate and our residential experience with small businesses in our city. So I'm confident that we are all ears to your ideas going forward. And thank you again for coming and I've learned a lot today and I think all of us on the, to the council and the planning commission have heard a lot of new ideas. So thank you again.
I also, I would also like to say I really appreciate everybody coming and hearing the ideas. And I would like to ask specifically about the follow-up. Will the resources in the PowerPoint be posted on the city website for people who weren't here and didn't have access to the information? What are the next steps?
Yes, so we will post this on the website, the PowerPoint. The information, and I'm glad you asked this question. So all of the information will be distilled into a document that we'll bring back to the city council at a future meeting for prioritization and assignment. And this isn't the end of the conversation. I don't mean to imply this is it. I mean, as you drive away and you're working and you think of something, send me an email. My cards are at the desk if you don't have one already or send Emmy an email with your thoughts. We'll include all of that material and we'll bring it back to the city council for further direction. Thank you.
Thank you.